It's pretty active for what happened.
It is eleven o'clock and I call the Celine County Commission Public Forum and Meeting for May seventeenth, two thousand sixteen to order. I ask that you all join me, stand and join me in the flag salute in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Guell.
Here.
Commissioner Price. Commissioner Larson.
Here.
And Commissioner Smith.
Here.
We'll move next to the public forum where citizens may speak on county government. That's usually limited to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to come forward at this time? Seeing none, we will move on to regular business. Item number one.
Approve the agenda for today's public forum as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda for the public forum as presented.
All second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item number two.
Approval of the county commission minutes from May tenth, two thousand sixteen.
Is there a motion?
One second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. Moving on to item number three.
Have the TSA law enforcement agreement and have a report by Mr. Tim Rogers, Executive Director of Salina Airport Authority.
Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Before you today is a proposed agreement. It's a joint agreement with the Salina Airport Authority, the city of Salina, and the Celine County and the Celine County Sheriff's Office for the, in order to provide local law enforcement support for TSA passengers screening operations at the MJ Kennedy Air Terminal. You're aware that we've been able to be successful with a community project and that is to restore scheduled air service at the Salina Regional Airport for the benefit of the citizens of Salina, Celine County, and all of North Central Kansas. The service will be provided by Great Lakes Airlines, which is a co-chair partner with United Airlines, non-stop flights to Denver International Airport, from which passengers originating out of Salina will be able to connect with flights to over one hundred and eighty non-stop destinations throughout the nation and throughout the world. I think the accomplishment in bringing back Great Lakes to our community with the service with the thirty passenger regional aircraft will just be a great benefit for our businesses, for our residents, business travel, personal travel. And I think puts Salina back on the map again as far as a destination and a, and is a truly a part of the national transportation system. In these times, though, when we talk about air transportation and the national transportation system, we must provide for the security of the aircraft and of the passengers onboard the flights. It was imperative that the TSA return to Salina and the Salina Regional Airport to provide passenger screening services. Those screening services are provided for according to federal laws and regulation. With the assistance of the city of Salina, the Salina Police Department, the Celine County Sheriff's Office and the TSA, we have drafted and have approved a new, have received approval for a new airport security program. And part of an airport security program is an agreement with local law enforcement and the governing bodies that have the responsibility for local law enforcement to provide local law enforcement a presence at this terminal building and at the screening checkpoint. The exact terms and process for that, for that law enforcement is, how that is applied and how that is used is part of an airport security program, but we need to show to the TSA that there is that formal agreement that the local law enforcement will be available for a response to the screening checkpoint and have a presence on a random basis at the screening checkpoint so that in the event, and it's very unlikely in our community, but in the event that there is a violation of local, state, or federal law, that an appropriate action or necessary, an arrest can take place. The TSA does not have an arrest authority, but they rely upon local law enforcement for that support. We're fortunate in this community to have the working relationship that is just second to none between the Celine County Sheriff's Office and the Salina Police Department. As we are working on this project, we work closely with Sheriff Kokonaski and, and preparing this, this document and also with Chief Nelson with the Salina Police Department, that we, so we could be in a position that, that when the time came, when the TSA's approvals came for the TSA to return to the Salina Regional Airport, that we could finalize an agreement for the local law enforcement and which has occurred, and this is the agreement that's before you today. The agreement provides for the sharing of the checkpoint responsibility between the Sheriff's Office and the Salina Police Department. The agreement provides that the Sheriff's Office and the police department will coordinate their presence. And, but basically there'll be a half, half type of sharing back and forth of the responsibility. There'll be ongoing coordination and training with both the Sheriff's Office and the Salina Police Department. In fact, one of the first coordination meetings and training opportunities will be yet this afternoon when TSA will be up and Under Sheriff, Under Sheriff Soldan, myself, and others with the Salina PD will be meeting with the TSA so we can start to implement the terms of a, of a law enforcement support agreement that we are considering today. The duties of the deputy or the police officer, yes, it's an expansion of existing duties, responsibilities as they are in patrol within, you know, their part of the county or their part of the city respectively. But still to this day, even today, there's still a response that Sheriff's, the Sheriff's Office and the Salina Police Department makes to the Salina Regional Airport. All deputies and all police officers have access and do patrol both the airport and airport industrial center. So it's an expansion of duties. It's, it is something that the Sheriff's Office has experienced with in the past in providing the law, law enforcement support at the terminal building. It will build upon that experience and that expertise that's already within the Sheriff's Office and then, then bring in the Salina Police Department. I'm available to answer any questions that the Board of County Commissioners may have. Sheriff Kokonaski and Under Sheriff Soldan is here and be glad to answer any questions from the operational standpoint that the Commissioners may have.
As always, I learned something every time presentations come before me, and I never knew that the TSA doesn't, can't arrest people.
Correct.
I never knew that.
Correct. They're, they're screeners, inspectors. They do have a law enforcement section, but at the screening checkpoint, that is why you see law enforcement officers at the large hub airports that are there for the entire time of a screening activity. It's why there's always a law enforcement response provision within airport security program to then within a certain amount of time summon and, and a response for our personnel that serve or do provide the public service in uniform. And I just have to, have to say and again compliment the Sheriff's Office and the Salina PD. They do have just their presence as a calming effect on people's behavior. And sometimes with maybe a stressful situation going through screening. And, and there have been situations across the country that the presence of a law enforcement officer has made the difference from a situation just being unsettling and maybe uncomfortable and not tragic. And so their service that they provide to all of us in our communities is something to be, we very much, I appreciate and I think is of extreme value.
And Rita, to follow up on upstairs, I think Commissioner Guell had a very good question about where the money comes from on this.
Yes, it comes out of that sheriff's operating fund.
It was just the idea that we weren't double dipping anyway.
Right. I thought that was good, that was a good question. And Commissioner Smith, I think you had a good question upstairs too, didn't you, about why this, who's signing the contract? If we can clear that up for the public.
In terms of the city signs for the police department.
Yes, sir.
I've spent quite a bit of time in the last ten years out at the airport and I see a lot of police and sheriff activity out there anyway. They're out there. It's not like this is something brand new that's gonna.
An extra employee or anything.
Yeah, and I'm thinking when they used to fly in the flight medical, they were always out there for that, weren't they, when they, something happens? Does that happen much anymore? Like someone, you fly somebody to a hospital or something? Since the helicopters do it, do they have very much of that anymore?
They do, and I think that's all. And, you know, Sheriff Kokonaski and Under Sheriff Soldan may be able to explain this differently and, but if I misstate, they will certainly correct me, I know. But it depends on the situation. For example, if there is a, a blood run or blood that's being flown in or some critical medication that's being flowed in safe for the Salina Regional Health Center, many times you will see a sheriff's deputy, a police officer, or even a Kansas Highway Patrol trooper standing at the ready and then they will take that tissue donation or that blood to the medical, medical facility of, when it's, time is critical. Again, the, the unknown and the, kind of the behind the scenes that public service provided by a sheriff's deputy and a, and a, and a police officer that we really don't see, they may be running lights and sirens, but you may not know that they're running blood or tissue to the hospital.
Well, I didn't know that, but I, what I'm saying is I see them out there quite often anyway. So it's not like it's something brand new. They're gonna start showing up at the airport and they've never done it before.
Correct.
And the city commission passed this last night.
Yes, they did. They approved the, the agreement five to zero last night.
Any further questions before I open it up to public comment?
And will the transition be very smooth from like side of the plane that we take from here to Denver and want to go on to Seattle? We're not gonna, we don't have to go through security anymore after we get to that point.
That is the true advantage of having a TSA screening here at the Salina Regional Airport. So once you pass through screening at Salina, then you will fly Great Lakes, the thirty seat regional aircraft to, to Denver International. You'll disembark and enter directly going to concourse A. And then you can go proceed to con, to your connecting flight on concourse A or B or C without any further screening or exit, go to the main terminal building and exit the building and either pick up your rental car, pick, get picked up by your ride or pick up the new light rail that Denver has started. They'll take you right down to downtown Denver on their new light rail system.
Take your ride to the Pepsi Center.
Correct.
It's gonna leave pretty quick.
Luggage will transfer.
Yes.
Luggage will transfer.
Yes, and that is through the, the United Airlines co-chair agreement and Great Lakes has interline agreements with American Airlines and Delta Airlines so that, so one, you know, one ticket and that your luggage is taken care of to your destination, yes. Yes, sir.
Is that also in Kansas City then to, I mean, Great Lakes is going to Kansas City too, or are they not?
No, Commissioner, no. This is just Salina to Denver.
Just the one to Denver.
There is no further service to, to the Kansas City International Airport.
So we have, we still have no service to Kansas City.
Kansas City, you'll find, I believe, the experience that will be that, that the connecting, that the flight to Denver is the destination and the chance to make connecting flights at the Denver International Airport will be far superior to anything that we ever experienced at Kansas City.
I know that.
And that'd be no desire, and there's no desire to, to restore any service to Kansas City.
Okay. Yeah, only that I want to go to Kansas City too.
And that, and that trip is like from here to Denver, an hour and forty minutes, a pretty, pretty short little flight to Denver, hour and forty minutes.
And the aircraft will be a comfortable airplane, thirty passenger aircraft, flight crew of three, captain, first officer, a flight attendant, and the aircraft is equipped with a lavatory.
Yeah, I just wanted to say on behalf of all of the Salina and Celine County citizens, what people think just happened overnight or gets done magically couldn't have gotten done without the help of your help at the Airport Authority and of course our Senator and everybody that worked behind the scenes. And I just think that the safety of everyone traveling, whether it's the TSA level or now our law enforcement level just goes to show that we do matter and we are important.
Is there any public comment? Questions?
Do you have an information package?
Yes.
And I'll have a few of these available for, for the public.
Good morning Commissioners.
Morning.
I think this is a, a very good idea to get, you know, this service to Salina, which will help people of Salina. One, the one question that I have is what, what is the anticipated number of people per day are gonna use this service? Is there any way to predict that or is there any way to figure that out? And are we gonna have long lines like everywhere else in the country?
If I could just answer that real quickly, I think that's an important and a valid question because people think that this is the line of Kansas. If their flight leaves at two, they probably think that they can show up at one thirty and they're gonna get on that flight. And that is not gonna be the case. They have to realize that it is gonna still take a while and you still get to, you still need to get there with plenty of advance notice. The plane is equipped for thirty passengers and there's gonna be two a day. The weekend is a little bit less, but Monday through Friday, there's going to be two a day. So we have the capability of sixty passengers a day traveling out of the, the Salina Airport. So I really do think that you still have to get to the airport with at least an hour, hour and a half advanced time to be able to go through all the security measures, have your luggage screened. You yourself will be screened and go through security measures and if thirty people were to show up at one thirty, that flight is not gonna leave on time.
And another advantage is your, your parking's free here. And that is big. That is big. I'm gonna tell you, if I go to Denver and I drive, drive to Denver and then go to Seattle, my, your cost is about sixty dollars for the weekend just to go to park out there.
I was gonna bring that comment out about the public parking.
Yep.
And there is no charge for that here in Salina.
Nope.
Which is a plus for the, you know, the people that will use the service. And I was, you know, sixty bucks is a lot of money and you have to pay three or four days of it.
Go to Wichita and just say, I mean, it's twenty dollars a day.
So we got an opportunity here to make some things, positive things happen to our community.
Yep.
And hopefully it'll work out where the, you know, how we expected and, and I was, I would say good luck and I hope it works.
And the only other thing that I can say about it is I don't know what the cost is. Affordable, we can use it a lot more if it's affordable than we could if it's totally expensive. Cause we, that's the only thing. We gotta compete with everybody else or be competitive.
Well, it'll provide more opportunities that we haven't seen yet as, you know, looking at it positively. And you should be able to come up with some new ideas or fresh ideas on how to utilize this service. And I think Tim would probably, you know, try to be, try to do those things. And, and I do wish to thank everybody involved in this, that this is something good for Salina. So we just keep it going.
Yep.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
Karen Shade, one one one, Wisconsin. If my memory is correct, this agreement was in the packet that you all received. I believe I watched Commissioner Price open his packet this morning right before the session. We're deviating a little bit from usual procedures where something is discussed one week and then brought back before the commission to be reviewed again for final vote. Are you feeling prepared, Commissioner Price?
Yes, I actually, I actually look at it, we get it on Thursday emailed to us. I don't wait till, I didn't get my packet till Monday. I don't know why it was so late coming this week. I really, by the time that packet gets to me, it's nice to have it in front of me to see it, but I've already studied it on my email.
I just wanted to check and make sure because.
I assure you, I don't, I wanna know what's coming, going on when I come here.
Well, and this is moving faster than usual.
And the good thing is I'm here.
Well, that, that.
Thank you.
That, that's all part of it. I just wanna make sure there won't be any backsies I didn't know kind of thing. Thanks.
Karen, one thing that I wanna tell you, yesterday we knew that we didn't get our packet and Linda provided us with that immediately.
I, yeah, I just, I just, you know, there's been a lot in the news about kind of, we didn't know this and can we go back and reexamine? And a lot of times your name is associated with that and I just wanted to make sure that, that you were prepared to, you, you had a chance to study this today. Thank you.
And there was a time today when we had a letter and I gave you a copy of that. I hadn't seen that letter. And I think if there's a letter to Commissioner, you don't put out one letter and expect people to get an envelope. I need to have that letter emailed to me or put in front of me personally. We used to have a secretary did that. They don't have many of the staff now to do the things they need to do, but if I get a letter, I would like to see it.
Well, that was a commissioned decision, I believe, to, to eliminate that position. So that's a consequence of that.
Doesn't mean we can't have to eliminate getting the letter.
Right.
And I made, I made that point.
All right. Further public comment?
Can I, can I make one more comment, please?
If it's on this issue, yes.
We were just, Ray Ryska, two thirty-five, we were just talking about opportunities. One opportunity that I see that would be productive for this project is to eliminate the transient guest tax to bring people to Salina, welcome them to Salina. And then they would probably be more tuned in to come to Salina without having to pay, I think it's another twelve percent. Maybe offer a coupon or something of that sort to say, okay, if you fly into Salina, you get this coupon that's worth twelve percent for local motels or hotels. Now, that's just basically saying welcome to Salina. And I think that would be something that could be addressed or looked at and maybe that could be it.
Private enterprise could do that.
Yeah, utilize.
And places like Expedia do that. They recommend motels. And then you go and read some of the rec, what has happened at some of these motels. I'm not gonna mention names, but there's some pretty bad, no air conditioning, no fans, no hot water. There's some pretty bad, some of those things at a bargain saving rates don't turn out to be a bargain sometime.
Let's bring it back to this issue at hand and if there's no more public comment, I bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we sign the Salina Regional Airport air law enforcement support agreement and recommendation by staff. Let's see, do we have a, do we have a number on that? No, there's no number. Just TSA. Okay?
Not seconded that.
So motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Tim. And you, Sheriff, too.
Item number four.
Before Dawn reads item number four, I didn't notice this until just now. I thought I was reading the proclamation, but it will be read by a New Network Ambuck member. Maria Rap is here to read the proclamation.
Maria Rap, okay.
Item number four.
Okay. Proclamation declaring May twenty sixteen is Ambuck's National Visibility Month and read by, proclamation read by Maria Rap of the New Networks Ambucks. Believe there's one up here.
Here, we got.
Here, we got one.
It'd be easier for you.
Take, no, take that.
Thank you. Dr. Maria Rap, and I'm here on behalf of the New Network Ambucks and also the Ambucks in.
Pull it a little closer to you.
Ambucks in town. There are two clubs in town. So our proclamation is to proclaim the month of May twenty sixteen as Ambuck's National Visibility Month, whereas Ambuck's is dedicated to creating mobility and independence for people with disabilities. And whereas the recognition of Ambucks as an organization making an important difference in communities across the United States as a noteworthy event. And whereas Salina County, Celine County is proud to boast two chapters of Ambucks, Salina AM Breakfast Bandits and New Network. And whereas New Network chap, chapter of Ambucks is a chapter now celebrating twenty-four years of service. Salina AM Chapter is now celebrating fifty-seven years of service. And whereas Celine County is proud to be the home of the Ambucks past National President Tom Lautis and past Great Plains Region Director Karen Vidrickson and past District Five D Governors Josh Mueller and Linda Andrew and current District Secretary Treasurer Natasha Gaywith and current District Five D Governor Jay Paul Roberts. And whereas each of the chapters have various community projects in which they participate such as funding and building fully accessible playgrounds and public parks and schools, financial assistance to children and adults with disabilities, building ramps to individuals' homes, providing therapeutic Amtrikes for children, and funding scholarships for students in physical therapy, occupational therapy, and speech and language pathology degree programs. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Celine County, Kansas hereby proclaim the month of May twenty sixteen as Ambuck's National Visibility Month in Celine County and urge all citizens to become more aware of the altruistic service and the wholesome upbuilding of communities they render.
All right. Thank you. What other activities do you have going on this week?
We do have an activity actually going on tonight. And we, we provide Amtrikes, which are specially designed tricycles for disabled children. In that way they can become children again, but also use it for therapy. So tonight we're actually having an Amtrike superhero parade. And that's going to be at Coronado, which is where the fully accessible, one of the fully accessible playgrounds is located. So these kids will get to dress up like superheroes. We are providing capes and we're all going to be there to support and have fun. They love to go and show off their Amtrikes and show off their ability to actually be mobile. That's what the clubs do is, is create independence for these people with disabilities. So the kids especially love that. We also are promoting on different radio stations and the newspapers around town. And the men's club actually continues to build wheelchair ramps and both clubs give away these Amtrikes. We raise money with a lot of our fundraisers to purchase these Amtrikes, which costs quite a bit of money. And not, you know, we try to keep it local, but we also can donate nationwide.
And you have all sizes like from toddlers to adults?
We do. There are small ones for toddlers that actually can be pushed by the therapist or the parents. And that's the nice thing is these can be used by the therapist for their therapy or at home for them to be able to be involved with kids in the neighborhood as well.
Very good. Great work. Before I present the proclamation to her, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we declare May twenty sixteen as Ambuck's National Visibility Month.
I second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I might add, I'm, I'm now incoming president of, of the Breakfast Club and we have now built a hundred and sixty-two ramps for people. Just built another couple of them last, a couple of weeks ago. We also are, are prime sponsor of Skyfire. A lot of people don't realize that what, how much money goes into Skyfire every year. So that's part of what we do along with helping build those Amtrikes and, and raising money. Both, both clubs raise money for Amtrikes and, and of course the scholarships and assistance to families who need to go to take their child to Children's Mercy or a specialist hospital in Denver or wherever. Yeah, we put a, both clubs put a lot of money back into the, into the town. So a hundred and sixty-two ramps, they're all wood, of course. They're, they've provided a lot of mobility for many, many people over the years, so.
Very good. Much appreciated.
And when you have your yearly deal, I, I participate in those and kinda enjoy them.
Yeah, the, the New Network one, yeah, that's, that's the New Network group at Ambassador. They, that's a fun night if anybody wants to go to that. That's, that's usually at March, Commissioner Larson, isn't it?
Awesome time.
Okay.
Item number five.
Resolution sixteen dash twenty-one ninety-nine, Celine County Crime Victim Fund Board.
I assume Rita's gonna be.
I believe Rita Deister will give you the report on that.
There is an opening on the Crime Victim Fund Board.
Uh, there is an opening on the Crime Victim Fund Board, and we would like, uh, the Commissioners to appoint Diana Fairbanks. I think they had discussed this earlier and approved it, so this is the resolution appointing her. Um, the Crime Victim Fund Board, um, helps reimburse victims for any kinda damage that they might have encountered, and it's, uh, been in the county for several years now, but there is a vacancy, so.
All right. Questions?
You might comment on that a little bit. Does a victim need to apply for that, or how does that work?
Well, I'm not the expert on this, and fortunately Ellen probably is doing a trial, so wasn't able to appear today, and I thought her office manager was gonna be here, but apparently not. Um, I believe that the, the victim does have to make an application, and then the, um, um, the, the board determines what, if any amount of money that will be given to the victim to help repay them for their damage, so.
And the police department say that you get a window broke out or your tire slashed, they tell the, the person, there, you can get help with this, with this fund. So they're kinda the one that passes it on, is mainly the-
And there's also a letter that goes out, 'cause I got one for some vandalism one time, uh, you know, call this number if you would like to pursue that, so. All right, further questions? Bring it to the Commission for Action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt Resolution one six dash two one nine nine. Uh, the Salina, the Celine County Crime Victim Fund Board and appoint Diana Fairback- Fairbanks to the board for a period of two years, starting May seventeenth, twenty sixteen.
I second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Item number six.
Having a Health Department update with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Mr. Tiller?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So, this report actually covers, uh, January through April. Um, which is why some of your graphs may look a little crowded in there, but, um, okay, there we go. So, starting with our maternal child health, uh, Sherry, the maternal child health coordinator, applied for a competitive program, which is the Kansas Nurse Leadership Residency Program, um, as a public health nurse representative, and was accepted into that, which will, after she graduates, that, uh, is a plus for the Health Department and for the community, as she learns additional leadership skills, um, and as we tackle some of those difficult issues with, uh, pregnancy and, and improving birth outcomes. Um, we were able to fill the Healthy Start Home Visitor Position, and we had staff attend, uh, continuing education training on, at the breastfeeding conference in Newton, and at the Governor's Public Health Conference, which takes place annually, uh, usually about the last week of April. And then between myself, uh, staff from, uh, maternal child health, and from the clinic, we started some collaborative discussions with USD three oh five, uh, which eventually will include the other school districts, once we have a, a good, uh, kinda plan and footprint, as well as with the Pregnancy Service Center on impacting, uh, STD rates and teen pregnancy rates here in Celine County. One thing I did wanna point out is if you look here, where there's no information in this postpartum home, um, there was a change to the definition of what is considered postpartum now, as far as for the, um, national, I guess you would say, that now they consider postpartum or after birth where they, that changes as sixty-one days after birth. So that's where, um, now the postpartum, instead of being immediately after birth. So now, that will kind of affect some of the numbers for the next couple of months, 'cause now the prenatal period, or that period before birth, actually runs until sixty days after the child is born. So you'll see some changes in the statistics on those over the next, it's probably between this one and the next one, as those numbers, some of those will flip flop. Uh, the numbers here on this one reflect the one, uh, family consultant position that we have with Heartland, and then the second one was, has been hired, and she will start on May twenty-fourth. Childcare licensing, um, because we do provide childcare licensing and inspections across, uh, Celine, Ottawa, and McPherson County, um, I ended up breaking down these three charts, so that just wasn't so crowded, and you could actually be able to, uh, get a better idea of, of the statistics. And we broke down, based off our discussion in December, um, some of the information, so now you can see how many complaints were received. So for instance, this, uh, regulated complaint, how many complaints they received in Celine County, and then how many inspections, because one complaint might entail two or three inspections, if they have to go back and recheck things. So that just gives you a better idea versus, uh, just a overall number of complaints, so it gives a clearer picture. And so continuing to work with and improve early childhood education, um, especially in childcare centers, so that their, you know, children are better prepared to, as they transition from there, either into Head Start or into school. Um, so childcare license staff participated with Talk Salina on the Early Childhood Community Meeting. Um, we had one of our staff attend the Poverty Simulation Workshop, uh, which they will be providing some of that information and their experience back on that, to help the rest of the staff really kind of understand, and that the point of that workshop was to help people understand what living in poverty is like. Um, they also conducted a childcare provider training, 'cause they do want to keep the childcare providers, um, providing that continuing education, so that they are up to date on the, the newest information, and also providing the best care, um, and education to the children that are in their care. And so this is just one picture from the Week of the Young Child event that took place on April sixteenth at Central Mall. We also had clinic staff there as well, um, and I'll show you a picture from that one here shortly. And then we don't have as many, uh, providers up in Ottawa County area. All right. Earlier in, I think it was February, uh, Kansas WIC conducted a series of meetings across the state called, and it was WIC Stakeholder Meeting, and essentially they were trying to gather information, um, from the people that work within WIC offices, um, in the areas where they were doing these meetings, as well as from, um, different people that are either involved directly or indirectly, with the intent of being able to improve the delivery of the WIC program in Kansas. Uh, so we had, uh, Erin Struble, which is one of our WIC staff who attended that, and she is also now the representative for the North Central Kansas, um, State WIC Advisory Committee, so as we work on grooming, you know, people for continuing, uh, positions as others look at retirement down the road. And then all the WIC staff attended the breastfeeding training, um, as well as the Kansas WIC Conference. And these conferences and trainings are all geared toward best practices, uh, improving delivery of services, and, you know, reaching the, the clients in the community. So home health, we were, in the last, uh, four months, we were, we hired a new home health coordinator. Um, her and one of the other home health staff attended the Kansas Home Care Association Spring Conference. They'll also be doing some additional ICD ten training, which is the, the ICD, uh, codes are the ones that are used. Um, so when you go see your doctor, it is the code that's generated, and then that code that is generated off of the, the procedure or the service provided, then is what's used as far as billing Medicare or Medicaid, and if, if that information is incorrect, then it opens us up to, uh, fines and violations and so forth, so. There's different trainings that go on in order to make sure that we're up to date with any changes that come down from Medicare. Um, and then they also participated in a senior day out, along with other home health agencies and long-term care facilities. And I believe it was hosted by, uh, by, uh, Brookdale Home Solutions, when they focused on stress therapy for, uh, seniors that are living in long-term care or in, uh, home care. And there's the other picture that I mentioned, uh, from the Week of the Young Child. That is our lab assist, or our, our lab tech in the, uh, bee costume for the can bee for, or be aware for, you know, immunizations. Um, and the theme of that, uh, Weekly Young Child Event was From Where the Wild Things Are. Um, a major highlight is that the clinic, for the second year in a row, has received the Jon Snow Award for Outstanding Work in Epidemiology. Um, and they do a lot of casework, a lot of contact follow-up, and some of that can be time-sensitive, and so they've spent a lot of dedicated work to it. Which, one of the categories that we've added up here is this top one about on-call, uh, phone cases. And that refers to the, um, the calls that Joyce may get on a weekend or on a night, whoever's carrying the on-call epidemiology phone, and then that starts a case investigation when she gets that phone call. So, and that may take two to three hours, depending on the information that needs to be gathered, who all needs to be contacted, uh, from there. Uh, the fourth generation HIV testing, uh, is something that's important for the community, because we do have the HIV Case Manager here, which is why we're able to do that. And now that will allow us to be able to do HIV testing in the Health Department, um, and be able, the, the client will be able to get their results within twenty minutes, as opposed to previously looking at, you know, sometimes up to seven days, because a sample has had to be sent to uh, KDAG in Topeka and processed, and then get the results back. Um, so this is a big, you know, a big thing for, for clients, especially if they, now they don't have to wait and, and be concerned, they can find out, and then if it is, with the HIV Case Manager be able to move forward with, you know, the next steps, take care of some of that anxiety and waiting around while they're, uh, waiting on test results. Uh, clinic staff and myself, along with many of the other, uh, county agencies, uh, participated in the Ebola Tabletop Exercise in the middle of April. Um, generated a lot of sustains from that, and some, uh, improvements across the county, and it was a multi-county uh, tabletop exercise for the North Central Healthcare Coalition Region. Um, we were just one county of, I think, eight, eight groups, about one or two of those groups were actually represented as from three or four very small counties, um, within the region. And so we've been working on the, uh, after-action review with emergency management and with the hospitals, so that we can make, uh, take those steps to move forward, um, and continuously improving our, our response capabilities and pre- uh, preparation and prevention of disaster and public health emergencies. So, in mentioning the after, or the after-hours phone calls for, you know, epidemiology, um, this here represents reported cases in the last four months of these different types of diseases. Um, I did wanna point out with this, that if you look at the bottom, you know, and it says, um, three cases of Zika, I wanted to clarify that this means that there were three possible cases of Zika that were reported, however, all three of them were in, were confirmed negative. So there wasn't actually three cases of Zika. Working within the program that we use in order to extract this data, to better be able to pull reported versus confirmed, um, so that it shows a clearer picture, but it's kind of a program's a little complicated, and you got to set the parameters on it, and, and to really get that, to pull out that data that way. But the raw numbers of what shows up sometimes can be misleading. Um, but the point I wanna make is that all of these, though, do generate some sort of investigation. Whether it's a short one or a long one, it all depends on the issue and what's going on. But that is man-hours that are spent on conducting those investigations.
So Jason, excuse me for interrupting. Is that the same on these others as well? Uh, for example, was the West Nile virus case positive or negative? Um, I understand the tuberculosis, 'cause it's very clear on the chart. Uh, was rabies a positive? How do we know?
These were, these were all, right now, all the ones showing here were all reported. Some of these may have been positive, some of them may have been negative. Um, right now, I'd have to go pull each individual record in order to see which ones were-
Negative or positive?
Right, until I can get the, the way the data is extracted. Um, 'cause I don't have a lot of experience yet on that part of the system, beyond just this basic report.
Okay.
And I've got additional training I will be doing on that one.
But with that Zika virus right now being on the tip of everybody's tongue, I'm glad you pointed that out, 'cause when I saw that, I went, whoa.
Right.
So there were three that were reported and investigated, but they were negative.
Correct. They were all, and it wasn't just, you know, some questions and a negative. These were ones that, because of travel or other symptomology, that they, the testing was done, and they actually tested negative. So, reported but tested negative, so we haven't had any cases in Celine County. Just want that to be clear. And one thing, since I was going to mention that, that I also brought up and added to this, this morning, um, since I was mentioning Zika, I also wanted to mention that the, one of the major preventive measures for Zika is the mosquito control. Now, there's not been, at this point, any reported cases of mosquito transmission of Zika. Um, and I emphasize mosquito control, because that is also important for West Nile virus and other mosquito-borne diseases. Making sure that there's no standing water, using insect repellent, you know, you know, long sleeves, uh, keep the skin covered. And if you're gonna travel, especially outside of the country, um, look at the Centers for Disease Control. They have an entire section that's on travel. And then, uh, some of my highlights, um, we had the Annual Health Promotion Summit as part of our Chronic Disease Risk Reduction Grant, that was in January. Um, in condun- or conjunction with the Sheriff's Department, um, and with informa- or with Brad and IT, uh, we've had a HIPAA audit and risk assessment that's been going on, just to make sure that we are identifying any kind of shortcomings that may be in the information technology side, any kind of security issues or privacy issues, um, and this is being proactive. This is not a reactive audit, because something happened. This is proactive to having any kind of things that may need to be addressed, identified, so that we can make sure that they're addressed, um, and prevent any kind of, uh, loss or theft of patient information especially. Um, last week, we started our strategic planning, really with the vision of looking at how the Health Department and the community, uh, public health, so recreating a new vision. Um, and we have a very long list of, of goals and ideas that we came out of that planning session with, that we'll be working on developing uh, for the next three to five years, as far as what we need to do and where we need to be at. Several health fairs, um, Chapman High School, Kansas Wesleyan, uh, went to the Nature Preparedness Conference, National Public Health Week was back in April, as well as the display we also had for County Government Month. And that's just a, a few of the, the overall happenings, but. And if there are any questions or comments?
Uh, Lyme disease. What, uh, what do we know about Lyme disease?
Well, this is National Lyme Disease, uh, Awareness Month. Um, Lyme disease is and can be kind of long-term depil- or debilitating for somebody that has it. Um, the biggest thing is it's transmitted by ticks, so it's important, if you've been out in the, in the wilderness, to make sure that you check for ticks. Not just for Lyme disease, but, you know, for other ones. But if you have a bull's eye rash, they call it, or any other kind of, of symptoms, um, and I don't have the full list of symptoms in front of me. don't have the full list of symptoms in front of me, then it's important to make sure that you get checked.
The only reason I ask this is because we know a lady that had a misdiagnosis, and she had kids over a four, five-year period, and these kids all had the Lyme disease also, through pregnancy and bor, birth. And they didn't find it until she moved from Pennsylvania to, the way I understand it, she moved to Colorado and went to Children's Hospital in Colorado Springs, or not in Colorado Springs, but in Denver. And they couldn't detect what was wrong with the children, but then they found out the mother had Lyme disease, and that's how they come up with...
Hmm.
Can you carry it that long?
You know, that's, individually, I think you could, but I don't, you know, as far as passing it through the pregnancy like that, that's something I'd have to look at.
That's something that I was really, I was really surprised, but my daughter's working with a young lady that, she's gonna get her to run a marathon with her, that went through the same thing.
All right, further questions? Public comment?
Ray Hearske, 235 North Santa Fe. Mr. Tiller, I was, you brought up the Zika virus, or the mosquito virus?
Yes.
And what, what is the procedure for that test, and who gets, who gets to pay for it, if they bring that issue to the Health Department?
Well, if, more often than not, it's going to be something that's going to be either diagnosed or through their primary care, because that's where they're going to end up going first. If they come to the Health Department, then we are, have to contact KDHE, and then discuss the, the case with them, and then they will authorize the testing for the Zika virus.
And so the, the state would pay for that, is what you're saying?
Correct. That's my understanding, if it's done through us. If it's done through the doctor's office, that may be a different story.
Now, is that just a simple blood test, that you look for what?
Are you asking what the lab is looking for?
If you, if someone came in and said, I think I got Zika, you'd call the KDHE, right?
Well, we would take some history first, because it's, there's more to it than just, oh, I think I have Zika. And then if the testing needs to be done, then we will do the testing, but...
So they're just gonna draw some blood and send it to the KDHE? And you're, you're not sure how they do that test?
No, I'm not a lab technician.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know what KDHE exactly does with the blood. You know, that's a whole different profession, but they do the, they're the ones that do the testing.
How long does it take to get that information back from the KDHE?
Uh, I have to get back to you on what that timeframe is, I don't know off the top of my head.
Doesn't sound like it's ever happened so far, has it? All three of the ones that...
Not with us, no.
Yeah.
One final question is, there was an issue recently, in the recent past, about syphilis. Can you give us an update on that, so we kind of, the public kind of knows what's going on with that?
Well, quite a while back, I did, the KDHE closed that outbreak. And then, since then, I believe we may have had one case that was unrelated to that, which is not, you know, above our, our baseline of what we've seen in the past, so... And I don't know, I don't know off the top of my head what the details were, if it was, came here from somewhere else, or if they lived here, or what, the case. I just know that we've had one that was since then.
Well, when that investigation started, it, it concerned the public, and I was just, I was just following up a little about that, and thank you for your comments.
Further comments? Questions?
Karen Shade. I wanted to, just on a personal note, I thought you were in the process of completing your master's degree, and I just wanted to say congratulations.
Thank you.
You've done that, a lot of that, while working full-time, so that, that is, in my opinion, a significant achievement. Going back to something, kind of sticking on the topic, in the syphilis outbreak, there, it emerged that a lot, or some medical providers in the community did not receive the Kansas Network notifications. And I was hoping for an update, because like with the, the Zika virus, I think people want to know, if there were an outbreak, how sure are we that the key medical people will get the information they need? How is the, the alternative network processing coming along?
At this point, we have, I would say, probably greater than 95% of the medical providers on our local health alert, or network, and those have been inputted to where we can be able to send mass faxes to all of their offices of these types of alerts. So things that may not rise to the level of a state alert, but that are important for the local, we have those, those capabilities now in place for it.
That sounds very positive and reassuring. The other thing I, I wanted to comment on was with the, the partnership efforts between maternal-child health and with the school districts, to try and make younger people aware that if they're casual in their sexual behaviors, that could have longer-term consequences on, on their health. I applaud you on tackling that issue. One of the things that came up upstairs was whether the Health Advisory Council meetings, which have been, are being held monthly, are needed as to be, need to be that frequently, and whether a less frequent meeting schedule would suffice. One of the things, I guess, I'm just saying it to bring everyone on the same page, this county commission is the Board of Health, and the Health Advisory Council is intended, by my recollection, to really have the people who are in the trenches provide some support and, and feedback to Jason in the, in the more technical terms of, of the issues. But I don't see that as a substitute for oversight by this body. My frustration is that, because, and I'm just using this, going from memory here, the Health Department budget is about 2.8 million, out of a county budget of about 4 million, 40 million, excuse me. Of the 2.8 million, my memory is about 2 million are coming from grants and outside sources, and about the county's contribution is about 800 million, or, excuse me, 800,000. So when we look at, on average, we have this county budget of 40 million, and on average in 2015, I found all of you were at official meetings and, and, and those kind of events, about four and a half hours a week. When I think that we only get these reports from Jason, I think it's every other month, it's a, an important half-hour update, or how much time is spent, but it's really just a fraction of the things that could be going on in discussions with the Health Department. I'm sure, you know, Zika's the hot topic right now, but among other topics that I think the Health Department could be exploring or looking at, might be, we have, with the syphilis outbreak, there was a meth, a meth component to that. We know that with the jails, we have a lot of people going in there for substance abuse issues, not so much that the, that's not where you treat substance abuse issues, but it's for the crimes and, and the other things associated with substance abuse. And I'm wondering if your department has been looking at any grants or ways of addressing prevention of substance abuse?
Not from that perspective, because then that would also entail probably more substance abuse prevention providers, which is also, along with behavioral health providers, in this, you know, area in general, is also in short supply. One thing that we are doing, and it was something that we found out that had been going on for quite a while, and then fell off a couple of years ago, and we've picked it back up, is that our physician assistant, Data, about once a month, is now doing STD awareness and prevention trainings for those that are in, inpatient drug treatment over at Central Kansas Foundation. But as far as additional drug prevention, substance abuse prevention, right now, the only thing really on our radar is to try and increase the availability of tobacco cessation programs and that kind of stuff in the county, because right now, I believe Tammy Walker Cancer Center is the only place that actually has programs besides the Can Quit phone line and so forth. And that was part of our strategic planning that we, I talked about that we did last week. So we'll be developing further plans and goals and objectives on how we're going to reach those things over the next few weeks.
So I would just say to this commission, we taught, we've taught, or I've heard multiple discussions, in 2014, the sheriff exceeded budget by about $500,000, largely due to a very, a significant increase in the number of inmates being housed there, that, that those costs were built into future budgets, but in 2015, he had that same significant increase. Probably will happen in 2016, because they're having the highest inmate counts that they've had. I would just suggest that there are things that could be being done with the Health Department. Perhaps behavioral health specialists are in short supply, I hope, because they're, they're finding that they're effective in maybe reducing the use of substance abuse. And if you reduce the use of substance, these illicit substances, then maybe won't be, people won't be committing the crimes that will be filling the jails. There's, there's many things the Health Department and that Health Department Advisory Council could and should be doing. I didn't happen to be there a week ago, but there, there's much that can be done there. And this committee, or this, this commission has not taken full advantage of the potential of the, the seven people you've brought in to, to provide the guidance and to provide suggestions. And so I, I just want to say, I think it's, that health, that committee has so much more potential, it's not realized. I can give you some very specific details about how to achieve that, but I think I've said plenty.
Karen, I'd, I'd like to address that these people that are on this committee are very busy people.
I understand.
They're doctors, they're not, they don't have, they don't live on nothing and have nothing to do with their lives, they're very busy people. And for us to expect them to come in when nothing is going on, they're not gonna serve, they don't get paid to do that.
Correct.
And they're not gonna serve time. We have to, we have to accommodate their time and what they are necessary to do. Our main doctor couldn't be there last, he didn't miss out on anything. And so we have to accommodate them also, it's not just about the commissioners. And I don't know where you come up with four and a half hours a week, you must be living in a la-la land, because it'd be more like 20 or 30 hours. You, you don't have a clue, Karen. You don't have a clue, no.
Officially, in the minutes, I'm taking it from the minutes.
Well, take the minutes, but we've got a whole week of things that we go to that aren't in the minutes.
I understand.
And last week was a terribly busy week, this is a busy week, so this last month has been, if you could do it in 20 or 30 hours, you've done well. And that's not waking up for two or three hours at night, making plans and things that you, that are on your mind. Get off your la-la land and get in the real world.
Karen, I appreciate your comments.
My, my one comment, though, is you're absolutely right, we are, as a community, very blessed to have healthcare providers who are willing to come to that Advisory Council. The focus in the, in how that is facilitated should be on getting input directly from them. In the past, it has been more of Jason Tiller providing detailed information about his activities and that of his staff. It's been provided in writing, it's gone through in detail, and with a, a healthcare provider, yes, that's gonna be problematic. I think there's ways to promote discussion, and there's ways to shut it down, and unfortunately, discussion has been shut down.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Jason, thank you for your update. Moving on to announcements, I would like to announce that all the commissioners will be going upstairs to room 213 to look at the new unisys voting solution. Their representatives are there to have an open house. The commission is going to be doing it first, and then, but we would like to invite the public from 1 to 4 to come to room 213 to see the demonstrations. And Dawn, if you have anything else to add to that?
No, I just welcome anybody who wants to come in and take a look at the new equipment. They've got, got everything set up and ready to go up there right now, have a cup of coffee and a cookie, if you wish, and, and take a look at what the, what the future holds in elections, because this is, this is, the future is now, and we've had our equipment for 10 years now, and so you're welcome to come up and kick the tires, so to speak, so...
From 1 to 4, we will head up there right now, and then the commission also will come back for their meeting number four at 1:30 this afternoon upstairs. So is there any other announcements that need to be made today?
I have a quick one.
Okay.
This happened in 1782, that's a few years ago. Congress printed a Bible for America and said, "The United States in Congress assembled recommends this edition of the Bible to the inhabitants of the United States, a neat edition of the Holy Scriptures for use in public schools." And then they passed this resolution, also, "The Congress of the United States recommends and approves the Holy Bible for use in all schools." 1782.
Motion to adjourn?
Somebody?
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.